Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's second council meeting. I'm not sure if this is the official one or the previous one was, but needless to say, want to welcome everyone, both in the audience and those who are joining on Rogers Television this evening. If I can ask everyone, as they're able to stand and sing, sorry, stand for the singing of "Oh, Canada," and tonight, we aren't on our own in terms of the council meeting. We are going to be joined by Ayla Hobson from the Empress Music Studio, right across the street in downtown Kitchener, and Ayla will be singing for us. Well, Ayla, that was absolutely wonderful. Thank you for joining us and sharing your strong voice and your awesome version of "Oh, Canada" with us tonight. We'll see you, come back again, okay? Good stuff. Oh, nothing like a supportive sibling. It's been moved by Councillor Schneider that the minutes of the regular meeting held April 16th and special meetings held April 16th and 30th, as mailed to the mayor and councillors, be accepted. All in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Any pecuniary conflicts of interest today? There being none. There is no communications to refer to file, and we will go to presentations, and there are actually some presentations, and they are in relations to our My Ideal City initiative that we had just prior to this council meeting, where we had our young students, primarily from Grade 5 and 6, who participated in the My Ideal City Initiative, act as mayor, councillor, delegations and CAO, and did a wonderful job during a half-hour meeting where we debated the whole issue around solar roofs and using solar energy. So with that, we'd like to formally present certificates to all of the participants, and so as I call them up, I'd like to invite them forward to receive their certificate up here. And so we'll start with the mayor, and that would be her worship, Laura Knight. Next, we have Councillor Nora Lees from Ward 1. Next up, we have Ward 2 Councillor Addie Kasper. Next up, we have Ward 3 Councillor Leah Fish. Next up, we have Ward 4 Councillor Carson Moradis. Next up, we have Ward 5 Councillor Elisa Ryder. Next up, we have Ward 6 Councillor Jessica Assunseal. Next up, we have Ward 7 Councillor Zoe Kiff. Ward 8 Councillor Michael Purceau. As I indicated earlier, Ward 9 Councillor Reiner Falstrow wasn't able to be here, so we'll get a certificate to him. So next, we have Ward 10 Councillor Tamir Shikai. Next, we have our CAO, Najima Olembay. It's Najima Olembay. Says the guy whose real name is hard enough to pronounce. Next up, we have our Pro Delegation Alice Newell. And our last person is the Con Delegation Sydney Dorsh. And with that, I just want to take this opportunity, as I did at the end of the special council meeting, to thank our partners from the Kitchener Citizen, who have been sponsoring this event since 2012, as well as Rogers Cable Television for covering the special meeting from 6:30 to 7:00. We understand that they will be posting it on their website, so you'll be able to access it there in the coming days. We're not exactly sure how quick that happens, but you can do that and access it there. And then the last thing I want to do is thank the staff from the Office of Mayor and Council, without whose support and help, we wouldn't be able to do this either. So please join me in giving them a round of applause. And finally, all of you are more than welcome to stay for the balance of the council meeting, but we won't be offended if you don't want to stick around, even though we don't expect it to be too, too long today. And on your way out, if you want to keep your name tags, feel free, but if you want to set them aside so that they can be recycled, you can just leave them with the page on the corner table over there on the way out. The gates are up for those who are leaving, so you don't have to worry about parking tonight. And I just want to thank all the mums and dads and supportive friends, family members, little brothers or sisters, or big brothers or sisters that were here today, supporting all of our participants in My Ideal City. Thank you very much, everyone. And we'll just pause for a second before we move into delegations. Councillor Singh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My apologies, I forgot to get to my note. I did have a conflict on the tenders on item number two, on Mauser and Serling Ave, as my parents own property on Mauser.
Okay, so when the time comes, I will deal with that one separately.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that forward. Okay, we have delegations here for the motion under 9C, two-way all-day-go rail service and high-speed rail, and that's going to be brought forward by Councillor Davy. Councillor Davy, do you want to bring forward the motion before we hear from delegations?
Certainly, Mr. Mayor, would you like me to read it out?
Probably, yeah, actually, I think it's important enough, you should.
Certainly. So whereas two-way all-day-go rail service and high-speed rail will be a key part of unlocking the full potential of the Toronto-Waterloo Innovation Corridor in southwestern Ontario, that will create over 170,000 jobs and add an estimated $17 billion to our gross domestic product. And whereas Waterloo region currently has approximately 3,000 job vacancies in the high-tech sector, and two-way all-day-go rail service and high-speed rail will help our companies attract and retain the talent and business connectivity in the Toronto-Waterloo Innovation Corridor and throughout southwestern Ontario, required to fill those vacancies, create jobs and succeed globally. And whereas two-way all-day-go rail service and high-speed rail service will alleviate 401 and roadway congestion issues coming in and out of our community on a daily basis. And whereas two-way all-day-go and rail service, high-speed rail service will positively impact our environment by reducing the number of vehicles on the road by approximately 5 million. Whereas, we will always advocate for a full range of medical services available within Waterloo region, two-way all-day-go rail service and high-speed rail will help our community members access medical centers more reliably and with greater comfort for any highly specialized services. And whereas the mayor and council and the city of Kitchener have approved the corporate business plan which prioritizes intergovernmental relations and passenger rail, advocacy for two-way all-day-go and high-speed rail. Whereas, we will help to ensure the impact and disruptions caused by construction and operation of two-way all-day-go rail service and high-speed rail are assessed and addressed fairly through the phases of consultation and project planning that are being developed. Therefore, be it resolved, the city of Kitchener calls upon all political parties at the provincial and federal levels to remain committed to both two-way all-day-go rail service from Toronto to Kitchener by 2024, and to move forward to bring Canada's first high-speed rail line from Toronto to London in 2025. Be it finally resolved, that a copy of this resolution be sent to the Prime Minister of Canada, leaders of the Ontario Liberal Party, the Ontario Progressive Conservative Party, the Ontario New Democratic Party and the Green Party of Ontario, to local, pardon me, to the local MPs and MPPs, the Association of Municipalities of Ontario and to the region of Waterloo and local area municipalities.
Okay, thank you, and that's been moved by yourself and seconded by Councillor Anitis, a seconding that, okay, thank you. We do have two delegations. Councillor Atherton, you have a question on the motion or? Okay, comment?
Comment.
Comments will come to later on.
Thank you.
So we do have two delegations here on this item. First, Ian Klugman, President and CEO of Communitec. And then Cory, are you coming up at the same time or are you doing? Same time, okay. And also Cory Jeffrey, Chief of Staff at Google Canada in their local offices. So welcome to both of you, Mr. Klugman and Mr. Jeffrey.
Well, thank you very much for allowing us to come and speak to city council this evening. We are fortunate to live in Waterloo region, a prosperous community that has reinvented itself many times over the last century, to adapt to change in times, always with an entrepreneurial focus, a desire to create new companies that can make this region, the world, indeed, a better place. The growth of these companies, whether in manufacturing, financial services, or the tech sector, have helped to create prosperity that we all enjoy. Today, the tech sector continues to grow rapidly. We see an average of more than one new startup a day through Communitec, and we're working directly with dozens of high-growth firms like D2L, Vidyard, Clear Path and East Empire. Overall, these companies have attracted more than $1 billion of investment over the past five years. We've also been fortunate to welcome large companies like Google, Shopify and Square, who've decided to make Waterloo region their home. While the overall outlook is positive, there are threats to this continued growth. Put simply, our companies can't find enough skilled employees to fuel their growth. There are thousands of open jobs available at tech companies across the region right now, and the growth plans they have in place will require thousands more. Put another way, almost 90% of job growth in the province last year was centered in Toronto, yet our companies have thousands of unfilled positions. This is a massive missed opportunity, not only for the tech sector, not only for Waterloo region, but also for those mid-sized cities across southwestern Ontario, who would like to see a future economic prospects for our children that don't necessarily involve the moving to Toronto. Nothing against Toronto, for the record. When I talk to companies about their growth plans and the challenges in recruiting enough skilled labor, the lack of adequate transit is always the top of the list. Many high-skilled workers are part of professional company, moving to a smaller market with inadequate transit connections is a non-starter for their partner. For younger employees coming out of universities and colleges, there is an understandable desire to be able to access big city amenities. And when companies are looking to recruit talent from outside the province, the drive from the airport to the interview is often enough to convince them not to take the job. The lack of transit doesn't only hurt employee attraction, but it also affects productivity and ability to grow companies here. This includes the lost productivity from employees sitting on the 401, as well as the challenge in attracting potential investors or customers to visit. And of course, this challenge isn't limited to the tech sector. Companies like Manulife, our world-class academic institutions, all are facing many of the same challenges. This is why both two-way all-day-go service and high-speed rail are crucial to the continued growth of the sector, the region and more broadly. Two-way all-day-go service at improved speeds is an incredibly important first step, as it will provide regular and reliable service that people can depend on for both business and personal travel. Purchasing the 30-kilometer track from CN and upgrading the line also provides an opportunity to build higher-speed rail that could get travel times between Kitchener and Toronto down to 48 minutes. This is where the opportunities of the Toronto-Waterloo corridor start to become a reality. Companies will be able to access talent, employees and customers and capital throughout the corridor, and will be able to compete with the innovation ecosystems around the globe. McKinsey, through a study, has estimated the potential benefits of this kind of ecosystem at $17 billion in GDP and 170,000 jobs. We have put a lot of collective effort into growing the tech sector in Waterloo region, and we can see the fruits of that labor today. But if we want to continue this growth, we need to build high-speed connections with Toronto. The last time this region faced a talent crunch of this magnitude, we created a university and an entirely new type of education with the co-op program. I'm hoping we can rise to the same challenge today. I'd now like to turn it over to Cory Jeffrey from Google, who will speak to the importance of prudent transit linkages for their growth in the region. Thank you.
Thank you for allowing me to speak to council today. My name is Cory, and I'm the Chief of Staff of Engineering for Google in Canada, and I'm here representing our local Kitchener office and the lead of that office, Dr. Stephen Woods. For any of you who follow Steve on social media, you will know that he's rather passionate about transit. Google has made a significant investment in the Waterloo region, and we believe in the ability of our team here to make incredible products that will positively impact people around the world. One recent example would be the redesign of Gmail. This product touches billions of people and was built here in our Kitchener office. Currently, we employ 500-plus people in the local office, and we're looking to continue to expand our investment in the region in the coming years. This is one of the main reasons that we chose to build our new offices right next to the multimobile transit hub. We know that in order to meet our goals, we'll need to both attract new talent to the region and do a better job at retaining more of the world-class talent coming out of our universities, including the University of Waterloo. We view both improved go service and high-speed rail as incredibly important tools in accomplishing just that. Currently, Google operates its own small transit service with a bus and shuttles running between the GTA and our local offices. This is not our preferred approach, but something that we've had to implement in order to find, employ and support our highly talented Googlers and their families. But this is neither a scalable nor a long-term solution. These buses are stuck in the same traffic that hinders and frustrates everyone else. While they make the commute easier and more productive for our employees, weather and delays are a source of continued frustration and inefficiency. The creation of a world-class, high-speed rail service that connects our region to the Pearson Airport in less than 30 minutes and downtown in less than an hour is what is needed to grow this region as a world-class competitor. Such a service would change the way Google and others look at growing their business in the region. The integration of the Toronto-Waterloo corridor is a dream we have yet to realize, but must. The better the teams that we are able to build here in Waterloo, and the more successful the projects and products we launch, the more we are able to expand and the bigger the efforts we are empowered to attempt. In conclusion, increasing access to talent along the Toronto-Waterloo corridor will increase the pace of investment that Google is able to make in the region, which is something we're very excited to do. Further, accessibility to a well-connected airport such as Pearson as an international hub will allow us to collaborate much more tightly and frequently with our international product teams in California, New York and worldwide. Thank you.
Thank you very much to both of you. We do have some questions. Councillor Singh.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to both for coming forward and absolutely both from Google and Communitec, the ongoing engagement as well as advocacy with other orders of government to ensure that we keep Waterloo region the forefront in mind of politicians when it comes in Toronto and in Ottawa. Cory, you mentioned something about the high-speed rail, the effectiveness of it, something, you know, reaching Pearson Airport in less than 30 minutes, downtown Toronto in about 40, 45 minutes. So the motion, the way it's written, absolutely supportive, but something that pops out in question is, as it's written with reference to all-day, two-way goal as well as high-speed rail. Can you focus on or respond to the difference between the two? What that means for, I guess, the magnitude of job creation and attraction of talent and that connectivity, Cory, that you mentioned, the difference between two-way goal and high-speed rail? What does it mean to, you know, an organization like Communitec that tries to promote companies to come here and for an employer like Google in reaching out to talent that would be in Toronto?
So, I mean, I think that what's important is that it's got to be transit, which is A, at a regular enough pace, and B, at a sufficient speed, and it's a combination of both. You know, when we look at all-day two-way go, we say, you know, this is great because it's got the pace, the rate, the sort of the regularity around the operation of it. High-speed rail would be something that would run less frequently, but it would also be something that would be at the right speed. And so it's a combination of these things. It's both really that is required in order for us to have the kind of seamless connectivity up and down the corridor necessary to allow people to live anywhere on the corridor, work anywhere on the corridor. So it's, you know, what it would mean, well, I think that what it would mean is a couple of things, one of which is there is tremendous potential for growth of companies in town. And in the absence of them being able to access the talent necessary, it means they're going to grow elsewhere. And then a second thing is more of a longer term, is that right now, we've got, you know, tremendous amount of GDP growth and economic growth that's occurring in Toronto, and really the opportunity for us is not just a city, but also as southwestern Ontario, is how do we unleash the growth potential of these small and mid-sized cities right across the province? And so it sort of, there's a very specific level that this is going to have an impact, and there's also at a much broader province-wide level.
Okay, so in your mind, Cory, do you want to touch on this or?
No.
Okay, perfect. In both your mind, is there a concern for the consideration of two-way goal and the commitment that the province has already made in outlining the stretch of railway that they will proceed in purchasing and the ongoing work that's already proceeded to this point? The reason why I ask this question is, in my mind, I think the real question really that remains is hopefully the commitment by all parties for high-speed rail, because I don't think there's a question about two-way goal that has to happen no matter what. But it's really the high-speed rail that will unleash the potential of this region. So do you guys have that same level of confidence, for the very least, of two-way goal, at least from, you know, engagement with your, you know, that you've had with other provincial parties? Apart from, obviously, the, you know, the current provincial parties?
I mean, I think this is the time, and I think that's why we're so supportive of this motion coming forward, is this is the time to have these kinds of important conversations about the vision of the future of Ontario. And so as we enter into an election, I think that these important policy conversations are what we need to be doing right now. So I think the timing is right, and I think the fact this has been surfaced and put forward as something that people want to talk about is very important.
Okay, well, I agree with that point. I still have a question of, so for Councillor Davy for the wording of the motion, but I can come back for that then later.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Anetski.
I'm in favor of two-way all-day-go service, and I know it's going one way right now, but having that service go both ways would be good, and I'd be hoping that be there, there'll be several runs during the day, three or four, spread out throughout the whole day. I sort of, when I read this, I sort of envisioned that the high speed would be something that would leave first thing in the morning here, from here to Toronto, another one from Toronto back to Kitchener, and that would be just sort of a one-shot during, I think, because that would be a high speed. Yet I find it very difficult to comprehend and appreciate this dream of a high-speed rail, if, I'm assuming it would be non-stop from Kitchener to Toronto or vice versa. Yet, when I think about the size of our municipality and I compare it to Toronto versus Montreal, where they tried high-speed rail some 30 years ago with the turbo train, it eventually became obsolete because there wasn't enough passengers and need for the cost, it was a combination, I understand. So having that not materialize, I'm struggling to appreciate your dream of trying to bring this here if there's not the population. I mean, the motion talks about going to London, and I think that the center is right here, not London, but that's my opinion. So could you maybe comment on that, either one of you?
Yeah, I mean, I think that the turbo train was from a different era and a different time, when highways were clear and open and there was, you know, a fraction of the number of cars on the road that are on the road right now. And there was, I think, you know, for any of us who are, you know, older than 40, And there was, I think, you know, for any of us who are, you know, older than 45 or so, you know, at the time, the dream was to own your own car. Times are changing. The congestion that we've got on roads like the 401 are untenable. We can't continue to widen. I heard somebody on Metro Morning about two years ago, and she was an expert, a transportation expert, and she said, you know, widening roads to combat congestion is like buying a bigger belt to address obesity. It's not going to the root cause of the issue. We continually see the growth of cars on 401. It is, you know, all indications are, it's untenable. The other thing that's really changed is that people's preferences for what kind of transport they want or transportation they want has shifted over the last number of years. I mean, when I was growing up, you know, what defined my generation was having a car and, you know, the cooler the car, the better. People now are growing up without having driver's licences, let alone cars. And so, there's a real shift to public transportation, intercity, you know, in-city. This is really the way that people are going to want to live. And so, I don't see it as being a shrinking demand for public transit, I see it as a growing demand.
And I would agree with you because I think it is going to grow. My question comes really down to the cost analysis, whether it's feasible versus the rate of the fare and the number of passengers to make it really worthwhile. You've got to have a full train really to make it effective.
And I think part of the ETA process, the environmental assessment process, is going to be looking at things like ridership.
Okay. That's, it looks like all the questions from council. Maybe I'll ask one or, like, obviously, the two of you come from the tech sector, one private sector, one not-for-profit related, but this is an issue that is being championed by not just the tech sector, but also the financial services, academia and so on. Wondering if you can touch a little bit on that, one of you?
Yeah, I mean, there's, anyone who has to spend any amount of time on the 401 is a champion of this initiative. And so, I mean, we are, you know, regular contact and lots of conversations with really pretty much every business and every kind of business in town. This is not something that's purely a technology industry. One of the biggest advocates in town, of course, is John Doughty, who's the, Mike Doughty, who's the CEO of Manulife. And so, it cuts right across our community, this need for us to do something to ensure that we remain competitive over time, our companies are able to remain competitive over time.
Okay, thank you. Those are all the questions we have.
Well, thank you very much for allowing us to appear today.
Appreciate it. So, we'll open the floor. councillor Singh, you had a question for councillor Davy?
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. And I try asking this question of the delegation as well and I'll forward it to councillor Davy. And him and I have had frequent conversations about this very topic and very supportive that we need to do all that we can to advocate, especially with the election, that we need to get commitment from the other parties involved as well. Now, the wording question I had was more specific to referencing all-way go and two-way go all-day as well as high-speed rail. Now, I'll ask your assessment of it. Could we be watering this motion down a little by focusing or referencing the two-way go as well? Because again, from my assessment, so far, I think it's a fair certainty that that would happen. And the other party seeing it saying, yes, we've already, you know, we're, that's happening and that's something we can commit to, the two-way go, but totally ignoring the high-speed rail and where that is, I think, one piece that could redefine the Waterloo region and Toronto corridor, apart from what would happen with the two-way go. Just wanted to take here and put on that.
Councillor Davy, I'll have you respond and then I'll certainly add some things because of the advocacy work we're doing in this regard.
Okay, thank you. So, councillor Singh, I guess the question is, are you worried about watering the high-speed rail down with two-way all-day go? And I'll be honest, that was one of the first things I considered when I brought this motion forward because I do think that while we definitely need two-way all-day go and I think there's a stepping process, I was worried about watering, like, you know, the governments that were trying to make this, were trying to make this non-partisan, I was worried that they would say, oh, well, we're meeting them halfway because we're doing two-way all-day go. Now, the problem is, is that even though the, I think the parties have shown support for two-way all-day go, there still is a risk there and it's not, hasn't happened yet. And I was reminded of the parable, I don't remember where it came from exactly, but the one about the dog with the bone in his mouth on the log over the water and he sees a reflection in the water, another dog, another bone, he says, yeah, you get two bones, ends up with none. So, on that reflection, I decided I wanted to keep the two-way all-day go in there as well.
Okay, all right.
And I think I'll just add to this. I think we're at a critical junction and you'll recall, I mean, there are other projects like Highway 7 that have been on the map for many decades through successive parties, through successive governments. And it was the ongoing advocacy and on both ends of the Kitchener-Guelph line that have finally seen that move forward. And I think it's really important that this issue continues to be at the forefront because they're not mutually exclusive. I mean, two-way all-day go is important from a regional rail perspective and a frequency of service perspective. High-speed rail is important in terms of having a number of high-speed trains through that corridor to be able to get people back and forth. And folks will recall that when this was announced, the time periods that we're talking about are 32 minutes between here and Pearson Airport and 48 minutes to downtown to Toronto. That obviously, you know, wouldn't happen on an hourly basis or something like you would see with regional rail eventually, but seeing both of those move forward is key and something that we need to keep the pressure on with all of the parties going forward. And that's a shared view with the tech sector, with the financial services sector, academia and all the partners that have been part of the advocacy for this over the last number of years.
Okay, I agree.
councillor Etherington, you were next.
Just a quick comment on the motion, Mr Mayor. I agree completely with two delegates and with the content of councillor Davy's motion, which I plan to support. But I still wonder why we're considering once again this subject. Without being overly cynical, I would suggest that all political parties, especially the Liberal Party and any politician who has not been living under a rock already knows this. And what we need is action instead of more words, the kind of words we keep hearing from politicians currently clamouring to get re-elected. So, it has my support, but I'm a little jaded on this subject.
Thank you for those comments. councillor Marsh.
Thank you. I just want to add my comments, no questions, that I'm very much in favour of this motion and it's very important, not only, as was mentioned by the delegate, that it's not only important for the tech sector or the insurance sector, it's also important for all sectors. We also have a lack of skilled trades, for example. We have people just unable to get from point A to point B along our innovation corridor. And I think that it's not watering down the message whatsoever. We need to advocate for better mobility and to decrease, at the same time, we're going to decrease greenhouse gas emissions, which is another important aspect of our advocacy for a better way in the future. So, this is a win-win and I encourage all of my colleagues to support it.
Sorry, councillor Gazolop.
Yeah, I'd like to state that I will be supporting the motion before us. It's pretty difficult not to support it. It's really asking for something that we should have had in this country probably 50 years ago. And we've had a lot of governments come and go and we're still there, we don't have this service. I don't see this whole big, long recommendation, there's a lot of whereas where for us, I don't really see anything different than what we've been asking for, what our economy needs. You don't have to go to Harvard to know that, so. But I guess if we send it one more time, I can support it. I do have some problems with, you know, I will, I'd like to know really down the road, is this going to help everybody? Can I say to the constituents that I have that our taxes are going to remain constant, that our utility bills are going to decrease? I'm not sure that, you know, I see $17 billion and 170,000, but, you know, what does that mean to the common person on the street? Another problem I have an issue with is that we're really bending over backwards for people who earn their income in a community, but once they get their pay cheque in their back pocket, they want to run off to some other community to spend it. So, that's really what we're promoting here because we obviously, the generation of today likes the big city. I love the big city. I have a, I have family there, grandchildren, friends, I love the big, and I hate going around the 401, but I make a living here and I live here, so. But I will support what's before us. Thank you.
councillor Davy, I'll come to you last. councillor Singh.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I've already, you know, stated my support for the motion. I think it can't be said enough how crucial and how important connectivity is for this area with a larger municipality like Toronto for traction of talent. And I think it's unnecessary to repeat the same great points that were articulated by the delegations. Simply focus that as a municipality, I think we need to constantly keep the pressure on all orders of higher government, ensuring that we can, you know, ask for all the assets and tools available to ensure that the potential and the momentum that exists in our community continues to flow forward and the growth, the momentum carries on. And that, you know, one big factor is of course, talent, as already stated, and also enhancing on some of the great things that we already have here in our region, a great quality of life as well as great institutions for academics. And a better connection is not necessarily just for talent coming here, but ensuring that students can effectively come here, go to school here and in some cases, remain and employ here because they've been introduced to the community. So, there's so many other ancillary benefits to having a better transit connection. It's not just the aspect of the tech sector or jobs, but I think it's, you know, overall improvement of quality of life of all Waterloo region residents. So, I think without a doubt, I'm in support of this motion and in any future motion or any endeavour or effort that we would have to continue on advocating and putting that pressure with the province and the federal government in asking for better transit and more support for this area. Apart from this, Mr Mayor, I would add or like to add one amendment or slight amendment, I think it's probably a friendly, to the motion, it already references, you know, the, all the parties within the province and as well as the regional Waterloo and local area municipalities. But I think this is a very poignant resolution, hopefully as it passes, to be carried through to the municipalities that run along the proposed two-way go and high-speed rail route leading from London on to Toronto. So, if that could be added, that this resolution also be passed to municipalities along the proposed route.
Okay. So, councillor Davy's indicated that he'll make that change.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you. And I will just add that the advocacy work on this issue, while it originally sort of was the two ends, has gone as far west as London initially because that's what's been proposed as phase one of the high-speed rail. And London and Guelph and others have, as well as Brampton and Halton Hills have been working with us in our advocacy efforts in that regard. councillor Yonetski.
I'm prepared to support the motion here. I have no concern about the two-way go train coming to and from Kitchener. I know it'd probably be a Melk Run stopping and maybe in Guelph, Milton, Georgetown, everything along the way, which is sort of normal unless they go through a non-stop one. But anyways, those trains are probably travelling somewhere around 90 kilometres an hour at the, at their highest speed. Yet, I still question high-speed rail. I appreciate Mr Klugman's comments on the feasibility of it. But if we're going to get down to the unit station in 48 minutes, and you can do the math, I think it works out to maybe about 110 or so kilometres an hour. To me, high-speed rail is like 150, 200, which you see around the world. This is not high-speed, this is just maybe a little faster than go train. But, you know, I'd still would like to see it materialise, but I'm not happy with the terminology.
So, to be clear, councillor Yonetski, the proposal from the province in fact is, now I'm having a blank, is it 2 or 250? Somebody help me. 250, thank you, is 250 kilometres an hour for the high-speed. Obviously, and it has a limited number of stops, so the proposed stops that are being considered as part of the environmental assessment are Toronto, Pearson, Guelph, Kitchener, London in phase one, and then Sarnia and Windsor in phase two. Obviously, the Toronto-to-Kitchener portion is less likely to reach the, those high speeds than the portion going from Kitchener through to London and ultimately Sarnia and Windsor, where you have vast expanses of non-urban area.
And Latin people too.
Well, I think, yeah, part of the idea is the growth as well. councillor Schneider, you're next.
Thank you, Mayor Verbanovic. I absolutely echo all the other positive comments that my fellow councillors have made. I do want to point out too, that this is two-way, so it allows others to come into our city, our area, to check out our facilities, our centre in the square, our festivals, our growing arts scene, our points of interest. So, it's going to bring people in here as well to enjoy our city.
councillor Ionidas.
Thank you, Mayor Verbanovic. I'm not going to really repeat what most of the delegates and some of my colleagues have mentioned. I wholeheartedly support this initiative and thank everyone that's involved because this will definitely be a one-in-a-million transformation for our community and for Southern Ontario. What I'm going to focus on is, earlier today, we had our strategy session and it was revolving around our community priorities and what that focused on was what was the top priorities that this community was looking for. And within the top priorities, transportation was one of the key ones and LRT and high-speed rail was even mentioned specifically. And that's one of the top priorities. But also, another top priority that was mentioned, and actually, it's the number one priority, was the environment. And again, this is something that addresses the environment. So, when I look at that document, which is, we do every four years and it's a valuable tool, and the high-speed rail and two-way all-day go support exactly what this document states.
So, just to, and thank you for that, councillor Davy. Before I give you the floor, councillor Ionidas did reference the Environics report, which we do once every four years. And in fact, it did say that 26% have identified inadequate transit as the top issue for the community to be dealing with. And from an economic development point of view, 28% have identified securing a provincial commitment to improve rail service between Kitchener and Toronto as being one of the most beneficial policy initiatives we undertook from an economic development point of view during this past term of council. And so, I think both of those speak to the importance of this issue to our residents, but also why we need to keep it at the forefront. councillor, councillor Ionidas is correct that the environment is a top priority. It was actually second, the infrastructure and so on was the first, but it was a very close second. And I think as councillor Marsh pointed out earlier, this does allow us to both deal with GHG reductions, which are so important in terms of both our local, our provincial and our national climate change strategies. and our national climate change strategies, and not to mention the importance, for many other reasons that my colleagues have outlined, from an economic development point of view about this, to ensure that there is the ability for people to move in both directions. You know, Counselor, Counselor Gazola is correct in the sense of speaking about the issue of people earning their income in one place and spending in another. For decades now, we've had many people who, in fact, from this region have gone to Toronto, earned their income, and then come back and lived here. And now, we're seeing that happen a bit in both directions, because people at different points in their lives are looking for something different. When you're younger and looking for an active nightlife scene, you may want to be in Toronto for a certain part of it, but not, certainly that doesn't apply to everyone. One only needs to look at the thousands of people working in our tech sector here. But then, as you look to, you know, settle down, have a family, people may be more inclined to look at something in a, in a smaller community. And I think the other, the other point that we can't lose sight of, particularly when we're talking about attracting talent to the area, and the fact that we don't have enough talent coming out of our own communities, is that when we do attract talent, that sometimes we have people that come as couples, and, and one of them may land a job in Waterloo region, but the other one may not be able to, and so, they have difficult decisions to make about where do they locate so that both of them can, can maintain their careers. And in some, in many cases, that means one is working in Toronto, the other one is working here, and so, they have to make that choice. And having connectivity that doesn't rely on a two-and-a-half, two-hour, forty-five-minute, sometimes longer commute in each direction each day, which does not really make it, is not something that really helps us in terms of our employee attraction efforts, is something that we're trying to correct through, through all of this. I see Counselor Galloway-Seelock has keyed in, so I'll go to her, and then I'll go to Counselor Davies for the final word.
Yeah, and just quickly, it's on a point that both you and Counselor Ionidis has made with regards to the Environics survey and the economic development, and the one question which you referenced, Mr. Mayor, with regards to securing a provincial commitment to improve rail service between Kitchener and Toronto. And the question was, which of the following items would you say has had the greatest benefit to Kitchener? And the average was twenty-eight percent said that over, which was a top priority. But what surprised me the most in that is that Ward Five residents were actually forty-one percent. They were the highest percentage, which to me is bizarre, because I represent the area, but also because we're a fairly car-dependent area, and so, the fact that they're able to recognize and see that this is an important thing that we need for our community, I think is, is something, it says a lot to me, and so, I think we need to continue to move forward and advocate on behalf of two-way all-day-go as well as the high-speed rail.
Thank you. Counselor Davies.
Thank you. I want to start by thanking Mr. Klugman for coming in, sharing his thoughts on behalf of Communitech, and I don't think I can let Mr. Jeffrey go without embarrassing him just a little bit. I happen to coach, even though I had nothing to do with him coming today, I just, I saw his name in the reports as everyone else. I coached a young playmaking center man, probably twelve-years-old, I want to say, long before I had kids, and I couldn't be happier that you're making plays at Google now, so good for you. On this item, I, I'm pretty forward for the obvious reason that now is the time to start, make sure we get this, make this issue nonpartisan, because I feel very strongly and deeply about the transit issue between here and, to be frank, London and Toronto. When you poke around, start doing some of the research, it's really mind-boggling that the 401s had identified as, as one of the busiest highways in the world, certainly in North America, which, which blows me away, because when I've compared it to other areas, like I look at State of California, State of California has a hundred and nine percent the population of all of Canada, in about four percent of the area, but we have the most congested highway in North America. That's, that's mind-boggling, right? So, I was careful to include the federal government in this as well, because they have to have a huge stake, and eventually, there really should be a sort of a national transit strategy, but the timing of this is such that the provinces dictate transit, and they need to all get on board in support of this. The other thing I think is important to highlight is the economic factor. I think a lot of people tend to look at high-speed rail as a sort of a beneficial, nice-to-have, and they forget that GDP number that's expected to come as a result. And when you remember that, if you look at gross domestic product, tax revenue from all levels of government in Canada is pretty close to forty percent. So, if you grow the jobs and the businesses by the amount of money that's protected by GDP, the federal government and the provincial government stand to gain a lot of tax revenue back to help support and pay for the system. So, I, it sounds like we're going to have a lot of support this council, I'm very happy to hear it, and I think, I do think one of the reasons it hasn't happened yet is Counselor Gazola said it should have happened many years ago. I think one of the reasons it hasn't happened yet is because I think there's a lot of sentiment out there that it's going to be very difficult to do. But the one thing that surprises me is, to a person, everyone I speak to is in support of this sort of initiative. It's certainly within our community, I know there's some challenges rurally, but when the biggest challenge you have is that it's going to be difficult to do, I'm surprised really that the, all levels of senior government aren't jumping on, on board, so to speak. So, with that, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to bring this motion forward, and ask for a recorded vote as well.
Okay, thank you. So, a recorded vote has been called, it has been moved and seconded, so we can ask the clerk to turn on the voting. And that has been carried unanimously, and just for the benefit of council, I have also given notice of motion at regional council, and we'll be dealing with a similar motion at regional council on Wednesday evening, and I believe there's some delegations coming from that to regional council as well. So, thank you to both of you for, and the rest of the supporting cast who have come in as, for this this evening. Thank you. Okay, moving on, we have Mr. Lamantia here for item B2, the renewal of the memorandum of understanding under the Committee of the Whole agenda, moved by Counselor Galloway-Seelock. Is there a seconder? Counselor Ionidis, any discussion? B2, under Committee of the Whole, Counselor Gazola.
Yeah, what is the year-end of the Waterloo, whatever's Waterloo?
Waterloo Region Economic Development Corporation?
Yes.
What's their year-end?
What's their year-end?
I believe it's December thirty-first.
So, I went into the website today, and I must confess, I had trouble finding it, because the name isn't exactly the way it, the way it comes out here. The reason I asked that question would be, it'd be nice to, have we received financial statements for that operation? We're here being asked to renew a five-year financial deal, it would be nice to have financial statements.
Okay.
Or reports before we commit ourselves for the next five years.
Okay. I don't know, Mr. Bennett or Mr. Lamantia want to answer that? If I could come down to the podium.
Yes, as an aside, I went into the website to try to find that out, and when I finally found the website, I couldn't really get much information.
Okay, well, Mr. Lamantia will try to help you.
Sure. So, we actually have audited financials on the website for 2016. We completed a 2017 audit, and the annual report should be on the website very shortly, so we can provide, if the ask is for 2017 audited financials, they can be forthcoming very quickly. We just have, we wanted to include it in the annual report, so through the mayor to answer the question.
Yeah, I'm not, don't want to hold up progress here tonight. I think I'm prepared to support it, but it would be nice, before we approve of an extended five-year deal, to really have had that before us, but, like I said, I'm confident of what it's going to tell me, but, and so, I don't want to hold the process.
Okay. So, they'll make sure that we get that as soon as possible. Counselor Gazola, you clicked in again, or? Oh, no, okay, Counsel, no, okay, Counselor Fernandez.
Thank you. So, I see in the report the number of benefits that have been accrued since WREDC has, has started. In terms of actual groundbreaking businesses that have located in the region, you've got the missions that happened to California, Germany, Chicago, the trade missions, investment deals, auto tech symposium for two-hundred attendees, so imagine some of the funding that you've been getting from all the different funding partners paid for some of these trips. But where's, where's the, sort of the shovel in the ground? What has, what has grown?
Sure. So, through the mayor, Counselor Fernandez, in, so in 2016, there were four new investment expansions, 2017, and they totaled nine-point-five million in new investment, that was a startup year for us. In 2017, that number was actually three-hundred-and-fifteen-point-five million and eleven deals, and, you know, some of the larger deals in 2017 included the Erwin Heimer expansion in Cambridge, and the Ascent Corporation acquisition in Cambridge, as well as the Conestoga Meats expansion in Woolwich. They were actually, the eleven are listed in the annual report and in some of the quarterly reports. In terms of the number of jobs in 2017 that were directly attributable to those expansions, it was about seventeen-hundred, and in, in 2016, it was, it was a much smaller number. One of the four in 2016 was the Highview Residences groundbreaking, which we attended. But, you know, just for the council, as a general statement, we don't take credit for all of the, for any of the groundbreaking or wins that happened in Waterloo region if we don't play either in a client count management role or supporting role. So, you know, the Shopify expansion in Waterloo and some of the other things that are happening in this region happen without our direct contribution, we don't actually include those in the results, but, you know, one of the challenges we're having now, because we've had such a successful 2017, is we have to fill up the pipeline with, with new projects. And one that recently closed in, Kitchener, announced last week, was the Leoni Edelcab expansion that we'd worked on for a couple of years.
Okay. I think it's important to state those numbers for the public.
Yep.
Just so that they understand that this is, you know, this is tax dollars, and how it relates and translates to jobs and new expansions. I think will give our community confidence that this is the right direction that we're going in. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Sorry, Counselor Davies.
Yes, sir, thank you. Just one question, Tony, have you, where are we in the list? Have other municipalities already agreed to the funding that you're asking for tonight?
So, this is the first actual, this is the first vote. There was a, last week, a number of the EDAC committees have motions to approve, so the region of Waterloo did that. I'm going to regional council on Wednesday night, and I'll be at all councils. I need to go before all the councils for the votes to answer any questions that come up, but a number of have recommended renewal, but the actual votes haven't taken place, so this is the first one.
Okay, very good, and, sorry.
It did pass a regional committee on, last week, and so, I anticipate the same will happen at council on Wednesday.
I zoned out there for a second, if no one's moved, this guy will be happy to.
It has been moved and seconded. Those up here, oh, no, Counselor Ionidis.
Yes, thanks, Mayor Verbanovic, and thanks, Tony, for being here. Can you just remind myself and, I guess, council, how many other organizations are there in, in Southern Ontario that are similar to you? We're just, we're not unique, so we're, we're, it's really a competitive area, would you say?
Yes, so through the mayor, to Counselor Ionidis, it actually is a very fiercely competitive environment, but we actually are quite unique, and we are, this region has been an innovator as far as having municipal and township partners pool resources to have a single source of investment promotion for FDI. So, Toronto Global, which was launched in February of last year, basically used our governance model, our memorandum of understanding, to launch their city-region model, also with eight municipal funders. You know, I can't think of any other, I mean, SOMA has a group in Eastern Ontario, but they're much smaller marketing organizations. This is actually a, considered a global best practice, so it is fairly unique.
Okay, so that's, that's, that's really good. So, in your opinion, how effective is, when you're looking at promoting, let's say, municipalities? From everything I've read, it's important to, to, when you want to compete in a global economy, that you compete as a region, rather, regions of economies rather than a single economy? Is, that's pretty correct, is it not, or?
Yeah, that's essentially correct. You know, companies don't actually view individual cities or municipalities as singular entities to grow, they, they look at the broader communities, they look at academic institutions from which to draw talent, and they'll look at livability. And so, a good example is the United States, they have many organizations like the Los, the LA EDC, New York EDC, Metro Denver, that represent anywhere from fifteen, or in the case of Los Angeles, eighty-eight cities, just to draw people to a city-region. And this is certainly true when, when we're abroad, and part of the, the goal is to promote a single window for new projects, where we can actually sit down with our tri-cities and our four townships to help in the decision-making afterwards, but you do need that single point of contact, and, and that's important, because, you know, large companies are looking for scale, they're looking for, you know, population, they're looking for universities, they're looking for a range of things that will be a magnet for talent.
Okay. Congratulations on all the successes. Thank you.
Counselor Singh.
Yeah, thank you, and glad to see this is here and on, and it's progressing as initially anticipated with the great work that the organization is doing, attracting, I guess, employers to come to our region. In the report, it outlines, and I think you've already said, since inception, closed twenty-one investment deals valued at three-forty-four. In many cases, I think, short-eyed, shortsightedness ends up being, well, wait a minute, we're paying out, and employment might be coming into Cambridge, or whatever the case may be other municipalities, but you've already said, it's, again, the ability to go out there and market as a wider region, but at the same time, you're able to show and express the, the assets of the wider region as well. And, so my question to you is, this three-forty-four million investment, so that would generate into, I guess, additional jobs as well as expansion and facility, so additional growth in, you know, the, the footprint that these companies would have, that means it's a return to the local municipalities as well, correct?
Yes, through the mayor, absolutely correct. Most of the expansions are actually not greenfield, so they've come from existing companies that have grown within the region, and that, that's actually expected, but it's also a testimony to the new model. You know, the CTT had a much more narrow mandate to only focus on greenfield for direct investment. Some of the other investment agencies have that, but the, it makes a lot of sense to work with existing companies on expansion, and that means if they're foreign-owned, and that we have a number that are, to make sure that you're helping the local team compete for the expansions. And so, certainly, a local example, recent one would be Leoni, and working with their executive team here about a year ago to kind of lay out their value proposition, and then helping them with the South Western Ontario Development Fund, visiting their, their headquarters in Nuremberg last September. These things do take time, but, yeah, so there are not only local expansions, but ancillary benefits that attribute to the whole region as a result.
So, the ancillary benefits are, when you have job growth as well as expansion of a facility, that's going to help additional companies that are here locally existing already?
Yeah, supply chains, well, you know, maybe the greatest example, and we, I haven't figured out whether we include it in our results or not, but the Toyota announcement last week in Cambridge, so my team and I in particular spent about five months in 2017 working on regulatory issues that Toyota and other large auto manufacturers had with Bill 148. We were successfully able to get an automotive exemption for Toyota, and that one-point-four-billion-dollar investment is going to impact sixty suppliers, mostly within the region, not to mention all the families that live in and around Waterloo region, so the supply chain impact is, is very important. It's not something we typically measure, but it is, you know, it is critically important.
So, congratulations on amazing win for, for you, for us. Just one last kind of going-away input to you, I think, you know, as you come back to the local municipalities, keeping the metrics of, you know, what was that facility expansion? What did that mean DCs, and of outside of number of jobs as well? Because it goes to show, you know, it's not just one-way flow of monies to an organization such as you, but your effort- such as you, but your effort brings taxation dollars back, which helps the overall community.
Yeah, thank you.
Council Marsh.
Thank you, Mayor Verbanovic. I'll be happy to support this motion. I just have a question, Mr. Lamontia. So before you came on board, and just as this organization started, I remember seeing a very detailed strategic plan with, it really drilled down to the nitty-gritty outcomes you were looking to achieve. Are you still working with that document, or has it been refreshed?
Through the Mayor, yeah. Councilor Marsh, that's an excellent question. So that strategy document was a kind of decederata document with 43 action items, ranging from what you would call core business to things like ensuring high school attainment levels match or exceed the provincial average. So when I was hired, and actually in the process, what I said to the board was, we're going to have to sit down early on and filter these and come up with the ones that we would actually own and be accountable for, those we would support, and those we would park because they're outside of core business. We're fundamentally, you know, an organization with a $2 million budget, so to be successful, you have to focus. And so the first few Saturdays, we sat down at Christie Digital with the board to do exactly that. So I would say a fair characterization, and it was a useful foundational document, you know, there's no question about that. But along with my Board of Directors, we decided that, you know, the focus would be local expansion for direct investment wins, investment marketing, partnering with the tourism community, and essentially working on a collaboration blueprint on expansion with our economic development partners in the cities and the townships. And I would say that four or five of the 43 action items were parked, because, for instance, on the issue of secondary school attainment, we realized very quickly that it would be impossible for us to actually own that and be accountable for that. We would love for those numbers to go up, but, you know, families are involved, school boards are involved, and I can't think of another investment promotion agency in North America that has that as responsibility, so the short answer is we had to prioritize.
Of course, sure. That makes sense when theory becomes implemented. So, but of the 35-plus action items, is that what you're still working with by any chance, or no?
You know, I, so through the Mayor, it's probably very dangerous for me to go Vegas. I think it's, the number that we actually took on was something like...
I don't need a number. I just want to know if that document is what you're working with, and if there's ever a chance for the councils that are supporting Waterloo EDC would have a chance to see where we're at with regard to those.
So, great question, through the Mayor. So the region took, has taken the responsibility of reporting on the scorecard, how we're doing as a region on the 43 action items, in particular, the ones that we own and the ones that the region and other parties own. And so you can expect a report card on that, but that's a good question.
Okay, great. That's all. I didn't mean to, I'm not asking you to tell us an exact number, but, yeah, okay.
No worries, no worries, yeah.
Okay, so that looks like it's all the questions. I will just add my own thanks, Tony, to you and your team for the work that you've done over the last number of years. I think there have been a number of success stories, as you outlined in response to Council Fernandez's question, you know, with various companies' jobs and direct investment, as well as facilitating funding from other orders of government with some of these company expansions, which I think has been, which I think has been important. I think the other thing that we can't underestimate, and it, you know, I will directly attribute this to you and the fact that you've come from the province and were the ADM previously, you've helped us build a network provincially and federally that is helping, bless you, who is helping, bring this area to the forefront. I know just even this week, we're having, might have even been today, Invest in Canada team who's in Toronto for training, from all, from the Invest in Canada offices all around the world, and they were bringing a group of them to Waterloo region, because they recognize the collaborative work that we're doing as eight municipal governments in this area is quite innovative. And I think the ties that you've helped bring in that regard, and work collaboratively with each of our respective economic development teams has been very helpful. So thank you for that, and please pass on our thanks to the rest of your team. So with that, the motion has been moved and seconded. Has anybody asked for a recorded, recorded vote has been requested as well? So if I can ask the clerk? And that's carried unanimously. Okay. Thank you for coming in. Anybody here for any other items on the agenda tonight? No? Okay. So we'll continue on then with the rest of the agenda, which will go to our tenders now. The tenders have been moved by Counselor Galloway-Seelock, seconded, Counselor Schneider. I will deal with, are there any questions on any of the tenders, first of all? There's only three? No? So I'll deal with, oh, Council Fernandez, you have a question?
We can get there faster.
Go ahead.
So I see on our tender for the Shaun's Lane that we're significantly over budget on that. I would like to have an understanding of where the money is going to come for, from that, considering the other two tenders are under budget, so there's a surplus. Will we be taking the money from one and passing it over to the other?
Mr. Lotenbach?
Yes, through the Mayor. There's an allocated account that we would move the funds for the two projects that are to the good and cover off the deficit of the other project. So it is funded as a result of that surplus from the other two projects, so there is available funding to proceed.
Okay. That's great. Thank you.
Council Gazola.
Yeah, I just want to ask, we used to have an accelerated investment program. That's not still around, is it? We have something similar to it, right?
Mr. Redman?
Through the Mayor, so that's what's now called the Water Infrastructure Program.
Okay, that's all I want to know. So all of these projects are coming out of that fund. Thank you.
Council Netzke.
Yeah, similar, questioning the WIP Road Reconstruction General Account, which is where you said the money's coming to pay for the deficit. How much money is in that account to pay for upcoming deficits?
Mr. Lotenbach?
Through the Mayor, currently in that account, there's approximately about 4.6 million. So 4.6 million in that account. Now, that's representative, obviously, of roads, water, and sewer and storm component. So we'll look at that account as part of the budget process, and look to allocate that to products as part of that, as part of the annual budget process.
Okay, so the tenders have been moved and seconded. I will deal with items one and three first. All those in favor? Opposed, that's carried. Item number two, with the noted conflict, all those in favor? Opposed, that's carried. Thank you. We'll now then move on to the committee reports and Community and Infrastructure Services, Council Galloway-Seelock.
Yes, it's been moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Sarah Marsh, that items one through seven be approved from the Community and Infrastructure Services Committee.
Okay, are there, it's been moved and seconded. Council Gazola, you have some questions?
I would like to see, I want to see item number four, item number five pulled out separately, and because number six is also an important stuff that we're taking, I would like to see that one pulled out separately also to deal with.
Okay, so I'll deal with the balance of the report, which is one, two, three, and seven. All those in favor? Opposed, that's carried. Number four, Council Gazola, did you have comments you want?
Yeah, number four, I'm supportive of the first part of the question, but I would like the two broken up as we did in committee, and I would like to vote on the second part separately, and I'd ask for a recorded vote.
Okay, that's fine. A recorded vote on both, or just on the second?
Just on the second one.
Okay, so all those in favor of the first paragraph? Opposed? Sorry. Sorry, they can...
I was in favor, I'm sorry.
Oh, in the first paragraph, okay, that's fine.
My hand went asleep.
That's fine, so that's carried unanimously. Paragraph two, a recorded vote has been requested. If I can ask the clerk. All those in favor? All those opposed? That's carried. Number five? Is there a particular reason?
Yeah, because I think six may go over a little faster than five. I don't really care.
Okay, fine, I'll, number six.
Okay, I would just like to speak to six if I could.
Go ahead.
No, I, this is to do with this brownfield remediation program, we're agreeing, I think it was about an $8 million support we're giving on this particular situation. And when it was discussed at committee last week, I totally agree with where we're going. The rules have been set, we're just following the rules, but I ask that we need to be reviewing this, and I understand that the region is in the process of reviewing it, and, but I didn't see anything written in the minutes to that extent, and I just want to reiterate that, that we do, at some point in the game, review that program, so we can, going forward, we can, we can deal with it.
Okay, staff will make note of that and take that under advisement.
Okay, and then I'd like a recorded vote on it.
Okay, so we'll deal with number six. All those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. And now I'll move on to number five. Council Gazola, again.
Okay, first, I just want to have a quick question on this. I'm trying to understand, in putting the bicycle lanes along, why we're going along Vanier Drive as opposed to one of the other streets? Looking at where the trail, the existing trails are now, I have a failure to understand why we wouldn't, we wouldn't direct bicyclists along Massey or another street on the other side of Vanier. Why we would really cut up Vanier to satisfy the bicycle master plan? Look at the existing trails that are there, that you're obviously going to want this to join into. Why are we going down Vanier Drive and causing quite a bit of upset there?
Mr. Redman?
Through the Mayor. So the cycling master plan looks at the overall network. So Vanier Drive is one of the more direct routes through the neighborhood. The cycling master plan also considers the volume and speed of traffic and the facility types that it recommends. So quiet, local residential streets would not necessarily need cycling lanes or other infrastructure on it. There's also two schools and a church along there that are destinations for people in the neighborhood, as well as the work that was subsequent to that with the LRT crossing that we're doing to provide a connection to the grocery store, the LCBO, everything in, on the fairway road side of things. So it's meant to be part of a broader network to promote active transportation in the neighborhood.
I totally disagree with you. Are you ready to deal with the five now? Because I would like to speak against it.
Okay, go ahead.
For whatever it's worth. I don't, and I said all of these things last week to no avail, but when you have 80% of the people on the street, the people that are directly affected by it, not in favor of what we're doing, it just doesn't make sense. When you look at the broad neighborhood of 820 properties, and only 14% of those responded, it's no wonder you would get, the 14% that would respond are people that are totally active cyclists or pedestrians, but the majority, I have to think that the majority of those 820 people in that broad neighborhood really don't care about it. And that's why, that's what showed, because only 14% of the people in that broad neighborhood bothered to respond to the questionnaire. So if this, I've been fighting this all over the city to no avail, and I don't, you know, every time this comes up, I hear pedestrian charter, pedestrian charter. So the last time it was here, I went back to review the pedestrian charter, and I clearly couldn't see where, if we have the sidewalks on one side of the street already, that we're not meeting the concept of pedestrian charter. We have here a case of people that are going to be affected are all opposed to it, and it's a substantial change to their neighborhood. And to boot, to do all of this, to put these bicycle lanes in, that who knows to what extent they're going to, it's costing us in the neighborhood of another $135,000. It's not broken, why are we fixing it? $135,000, there's a lot better places we could use to spend that money. So I won't be supporting it, and I would like to have the rest of council not supported. It's not broken, so no need to fix it.
Council Netzke.
Yeah, I echo Council Gazola's comments on this. I also took the opportunity this past week to go in the area along Vanier Drive to explore it, as well as the budding streets, to see how it functions and what the sidewalk situation is like, and how the potential bike lanes would be. I looked at a map of that area just to get an appreciation for bird's eye view, how it would, it would flow. And so, again, I'm not happy with the sidewalk policy in terms of the intent. I mean, there's a sidewalk on one side, it was right beside the church, it's beside the school, I should say, there's two schools, and it functions well. You know, bicycles could be used on the side streets as well. It seems like a good opportunity, and you can also save some parking spaces, so I'm not supporting this at all.
Any other comments? Not, I'll just make my own. I will be supporting this. You know, I find it interesting, because we regularly hear from members of council about the importance of having better pedestrian access, having better trail access, having better cycling paths and so on. We regularly hear from a growing portion of the population looking for the same thing, and, you know, that was borne out again in the Inveronic survey that was talked about today. I can appreciate and recognize that the change isn't always easy, but at the same time, if we're going to make that fundamental modal shift, it means that, you know, council has to have the courage to make these changes in order to take our community into a direction that's important in terms of some of these issues. Now, it is, it's a struggle, and I... Now, it is, it's a struggle, and I can appreciate that. But we can't keep redoing these roads when we have these opportunities to do these things and not make the appropriate changes to essentially leave things either to be redone again at extra cost to the taxpayer or wait for the next cycle when the opportunity presents itself, which will be thirty, forty years down the road, if not longer. And so I'm inclined, certainly, to support these unless there's a compelling reason not to. And so a recorded vote has been called on this issue. And we will take that vote now.
Those in favor? Those opposed? That is carried. Okay, Heritage Kitchener, Counselor Gazola, I believe you're bringing that one forward?
Been moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Einertis. Resolution from Heritage Committee that staff be permitted to install two interpretive signs in Victoria Park near the Four Bay and the outlet, generally in the locations, as presented at the Heritage Kitchener meeting on May 1st, 2018, which would inform the residents about the lake and its maintenance requirements.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, that's carried unanimously. Okay. Moving on then to unfinished business. There is none. We'll move on to new business. Because I'll have to pass the chair, I'll deal with Counselor, for my motion, I'll deal with Counselor Fernandez's motion first. And that's parking on aprons. Counselor Fernandez, I think before I deal with it, I need to take your motion to reconsider. So who's, are you moving the motion to reconsider? That's being moved by Counselor Fernandez, seconded by Counselor Singh. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, that's carried. So Counselor Fernandez, if you want to bring forward your motion.
Yes, thank you very much. So my motion essentially says, whereas on December 15th, 2014, council approved Clause One of Report CSD 14108, that parking on the boulevard paved area of the driveway between the sidewalk and the curb road edge be permitted in Ward Five for December 1st to March 31st annually, subject to the conditions outlined in the report. Whereas on December 15th, the council did not approve Clause Two of the report, that parking on the boulevard paved area of the driveway between sidewalk and the curb road edge be permitted from December 1st to March 31st as part of a one-year pilot project in Wards One to Four and Wards Six to Ten. And whereas on June 26th, 2017, council further approved a two-year pilot program to permit year-round boulevard parking for the Wildflower subdivision. And whereas a number of residents continued to bring forward requests to permit boulevard parking in Ward Four, be it further resolved that the following motion, which was voted on and lost on a recorded vote on December 15th, 2014, at a city council meeting, be reconsidered. That parking on the boulevard paved area of the driveway between the sidewalk and the curb road edge be permitted from December 1st to March 31st as part of a one-year pilot project in Wards One to Four and Wards Six to Ten. And I'd like to make a few comments, and then I'll wait till after. Would you like me to do that now or afterwards?
It's up to you, but is there a second for the motion? Counselor Yanetski, okay.
I mean, I'll just, I'll briefly make a couple of comments. You know, when the original motion came forward from the Ward Five Counselor, the rationale that she gave was really important to her ward. And as the years have moved forward, I seeing how important it is throughout the city, I see more and more and more people parking on the apron. I think during the winter, it is actually a good, safe place for those cars to be. And it reduces the number of tickets, which may not be good for our revenue. But I think it's important for us to help people find safe places to park during our winter seasons. I don't know about Counselor Snyder's ward or Counselor Davy's ward or Counselor Einertis' ward, but certainly there's no development in those, new development happening in those wards as well. And I think the frontage on those houses is getting smaller and smaller. It's more difficult to park on the street. So to that reason, I think it might be worth at least seeing what happens in a one-year pilot project. And I look forward to support from the rest of council.
Counselor Marsh?
Thank you. I just want to ask a question of clarification. So if, as it states in the motion, that if it's residents specifically in Ward Four that have requested it, why is the motion to include all wards rather than just Ward Four? And I'll say, I do have a concern for Ward Ten anyway, because for the majority of properties, there's not enough room on the apron. And so I would worry that people would try to make it work and then impede on the sidewalk.
Counselor Fernandez?
Okay. Sorry, the last part, I was a little bit, you're saying that there's not enough room on the apron in most of your, in most of your properties? So it was?
The property's in Ward Ten.
In Ward Ten, okay. So you would rather see it just focus on Ward Four?
I'm just asking why it is that you're hoping to make it happen throughout the city rather than?
I think because I remember when this discussion happened that there were a number of other counselors who thought that this was a favorable approach and supported the counselor for Ward Five at the time, who was bringing this forward. So in remembering and recollecting how it went then, I thought that it might be good to broaden this across the city.
I see, okay. Thank you.
Counselor Singh?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be the first one to concede. When this council looked at it back in December 15, 2014, I had strongly spoken in opposition to allow for a, you know, citywide pilot project, although I understood the concerns laid out from the Ward Five Counselor and thought that's probably a well-suited area. Since that time, I have heard from numerous residents who, you know, were surprised that that's not being allowed in Ward Six. Although I'm not fully won over that this is the direction that we do need to go, it's a personal opinion. I think it sets a poor reflection when you have, you know, if a number of property owners were to park on their boulevard, creating a bit of a wall from a street view perspective. I think it does probably merit some sort of consideration in looking citywide and taking feedback from our residents. And so would be supportive of the motion at this point, looking at a trial project. Now, I did have a question of, actually, Counselor Fernandez. Through the motion, are you hoping for staff to bring back a report? Or like what data will be collected out of the trial project?
Counselor Fernandez?
You know, that's a good question, Counselor Singh. I hadn't actually thought about that. I suppose the question should be posed to staff to see the implications throughout the city with regard to the way bylaw has to enforce and the way the impacts might be during the winter.
So I hope you'd be amenable to add that amendment, that some sort of report do come back at the end of the year?
I would be most happy to add that to the motion.
Okay, Counselor Yanetski?
I'm prepared to support this. I don't see this as a big issue. I think it's been successful. We're only talking four months of the year, basically during the winter. And during those four months of the year, you can't park overnight on the street because of the regulations for snow removal. So, and I know a number of streets won't be able to accommodate it. I know the street I live on, the boulevard is only about three, four feet. You can only barely get a half a car on there, so you're not going to park it. And so there are a number of streets throughout my ward as well as other wards that it's impossible. But for the areas that you have room to park a vehicle, I don't see it as an issue. I know they do it in Guelph, seems to be successful there, and other municipalities as well. So I'm prepared to support it. I don't even think we need a report. We can just go right ahead and do it.
Counselor Einertis?
Thank you, Mayor Verbanovic. I'm very supportive of this recommendation. I was very vocal when we were debating on this at the time, that it should have been citywide. And in fact, I'm not, I don't even want to see a pilot program. We've had Ward Four as a pilot for the last five, four years. I see it every day in my ward that I represent, that are unofficially doing it. I think I would like to strike out as a friendly amendment to add it without the pilot, to strike that out. And just move forward with the program.
Okay, I'll ask Counselor Fernandez, is that friendly?
It certainly is friendly, I suppose.
We don't technically do friendly amendments, but if you want to amend your motion to that regard, I'm just trying to move things along. Okay, can you write it out then, please?
Why don't we do that?
Counselor Marsh?
Yes, I wanted to ask staff if there are any concerns about the direction we're heading with this motion being citywide as well as having no pilot project, period.
Mr. Mayor?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Back in 2014, when staff brought our report and recommendations forward, we recommended it be citywide at that time. Committee approved that recommendation, and then council, probably two weeks later, turned down a citywide. Our experience in Ward Five has been a positive one. I think we received three or four complaints through all of last winter. So it's not something that we'd be against. In terms of a pilot versus a full program, the benefit, I think, to a pilot would be in those areas that may not be geographically the same as Ward Five. And there may be some operational issues that we would want to test first. The only thing I would say that we would not want to do is to get into a patchwork where three wards it's allowed and the rest it's not. It was already a challenge for our bylaw staff to communicate the one ward. So I think it's either one ward or it's across the city.
Okay, and I had brought up a concern earlier that people might try to, you know, make it work on a boulevard apron that actually isn't big enough. So what are your thoughts about how we might deal with that?
So through you, Mr. Mayor. That's why I'm suggesting a pilot might not be a bad idea, because there are other cities in the downtown wards I can think of specifically where there may not be the boulevard width to do it as often. And people may try, even though we tell them they're not allowed. And so that would give us an opportunity to run it for a year citywide, come back with a report to say if we've had any troubles or if it's been as successful as the Ward Five pilot was.
Okay. I would also want to bring forward, I don't know if it's friendly or not, but an amendment to the motion. And that is just that, that we add at the beginning of the action portion of this motion, that where adequate space allows, parking on the boulevard and then continuing on.
Sorry, I'm just going to point a clarification because I've dealt with this for a few years now. It would be under where it says, I can't remember exactly in the motion, but there's rules that you have to follow. And there are some places that people can't park on their boulevard because it's not wide enough. So it's not a?
So it's implied?
It doesn't, yeah. So there's rules that actually you have to follow, like your tires can't be on the grass, you can't be overhanging the sidewalk, you can't be overhanging the road. I can't remember all the rules that go around it because then you could still get a ticket. I'm sure we would probably, like, educate before we take it. But there are all those, I think it's under the first clause where it's subject to conditions outlined in the report. Because you don't have the report in front of you, you wouldn't be able to see that right now. But it is subject to, you can't be on the grass and all those types of things.
Okay, I just want to make sure that those conditions are included in this motion as well. It's not abundantly clear. So as long, I'm seeing Counselor Fernandez nod her head yes, so I can withdraw my amendment at this time.
Okay, thank you. So to be clear, I think your amendment, Counselor, Counselor Einertis, is that you're striking the words from the original motion, simply striking the words as part of a one-year pilot project. That's your amendment, okay? Is there a second for that amendment? Counselor Davy? Counselor Snyder, you're next.
Thank you, Mayor Verbanovic. I welcome this. I have had requests from constituents in Ward Two about this as well. I don't think that it's something that everyone will have an uptake on, but those that need it, I think will really be appreciative of it.
Counselor Singh?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Although I've already spoken on the motion, just a quick comment on the amendment. Although I can appreciate why Counselor Einertis is bringing this forward, as you may have heard more from his residents, I still continue on having the same reservations. I think if you look at the original motion as laid out, it does allow us an opportunity to get a citywide perspective. And going back, initially when we had looked at this, that was the original recommendation, that it be a citywide pilot project. It was amended to Ward Five. We do have data from Ward Five, although optimistic and it's well-suited, I think for that area. We yet don't know what the overall concerns will be. As we all know, the timing of this year and upcoming election, all those that are running for office, that will be an opportunity for feedback and engagement with the very residents and hearing what their perspective may be. I don't think we take anything away from allowing for a continuation of a one-year pilot project and, at the same time, having added benefit from hearing from staff in case we did have concerns. So we can have a balanced perspective on this. And that's why I necessarily can't support the amendment, although I do support, this time now, the one-year pilot project for citywide.
Counselor Gazola?
Yeah, I guess if this were to come back again, we're going to have a new council, and you don't need a special resolution to bring it back. But having said that, I will support the program, but I would like to see us do the one-year trial. That really doesn't cost us anything, and it gives us an opportunity of looking to see how it works. I'd hate to see everybody trying to plug their car into a space that they don't fit into. So by going ahead with it on a one-year program, we can see how it works. And if we're all running into problems, that can be reported to us. So I won't support, I don't know how I do this. I don't support that one. I'll support the original motion. Which one do you call first?
Well, I think you're probably familiar with Counselor Gazola. We'll deal with the amendment first. And if it carries it, then we'll deal with the amended motion. If it doesn't carry, then we'll deal with the original motion. Any other questions, comments? I have a couple of questions. And I can't remember if from the last time when we dealt with this, were there, were there any concerns from GRAC or the, from any community members around accessibility issues with this? Mr. Mayor?
Through you, Mr. Chair. In reading the previous staff report and the minutes from both committee and council from the time, I didn't find anything related to accessibility. There was a delegation that appeared at council, but it was related more to the fact that that individual felt that this was simply encouraging an automobile culture within our community, and he didn't believe that was something that we should do.
Okay. And then I guess the other thing being, when we dealt with this last time, I realized this was notice on the agenda. But last time, was it not part of a broader conversation? this was notice on the agenda, but last time, was it not part of a broader conversation that was happening at the time? So were there delegations, other delegations that showed up on this issue?
So through you, Mr. Chair. It went to committee on December 8th, and went to council on December 15th. I couldn't find in my notes why it was that committee voted one way and then council voted another. What I can tell you is that this delegation spoke out, and I do recall receiving emails from residents stating their position on this idea.
So I'm wondering, I mean, what we're talking about right now is not going to be impacted by, you know, whether we deal with this today, or whether we deal with this next council And because it was something that generated a fair bit of interest in the past, and I know there are, I've heard from people in the wards that are supportive of this issue, but do recall that there were some concerns as well. I'm wondering if we may be best served to allow for community engagement to happen, to simply defer this to the next council agenda, and actually allow any delegations that might be interested to come forward to council, so that there is an opportunity for them to be heard. Because I think, you know, in this particular instance, as we've heard, there was additional discussion that went on at the time, and so the community was sort of in a mind frame to be dealing with this issue. I don't think that's really the case right now, and hopefully between now and next council, if we did defer it, we would be in a situation where, you know, the local media and so on could hopefully do a story on it, and that may generate some citizen engagement, one way or the other. I anticipate that we would probably hear from more people that are supportive of it, but I don't know that. So I would personally be in favor of looking at that, particularly since time is not a sensitivity here.
I'll move a deferral.
You're moving a deferral to June 11? Is there a second for that? Counselor Singh? He's moving a deferral to June the 11th.
That's council.
Yes, and Counselor Singh has seconded that? Is there, before I take the motion, I have two other speakers in the queue, I'll take them before I deal with that. Counselor Iannidis?
Yeah, is there comments now? Can we make comments?
Yeah, go ahead.
I won't be supporting the deferral. It's been pretty clear, it's been system-wide used in Ward Five for four years. It's been consistently used by residents in other wards, seen it throughout the city. I don't know why we're lollygagging on this. This has been clearly stated by residents that they would, they want to see this. I know I've been approached and talked to about this on numerous occasions, so I don't want to see deferral, I just want to see this implemented immediately.
Counselor Galloway-Seelak?
One thing is, I think it would be advantageous for members of council to have a chance to read the old report before we move forward with this. Because at the time, we didn't just, we dealt with it on a pilot basis in Ward Five the first time, and then we came back with a report on how it actually went, and that's when it said, like, let's move forward with the whole city, but it didn't, we didn't have the votes. And the reason, if I recall correctly, why we didn't have, we had the votes in committee, but we didn't have it in council, is because there was quite a bit of opposition from wards outside of Ward Five. So I think naturally, if you haven't, if you've been hearing from your residents that they want it, then you don't need to. But I think there's some counselors who haven't heard anything about it, and therefore would hesitate to move forward with it. I know from my experience and having moved this forward, we really haven't had any concerns. We had a few, we had a little bit of a learning curve and a little bit of an education time that we had to make sure we educated the community on what the rules were. But I think the other thing with this, and the timing of it right now, is we have an operations review that's coming forward soon too, and we're looking at sidewalks, no removal, and I think we need to deal with that before, because I even have some concerns with the project in my ward, and if we are going to do sidewalks, no removal, that could be an added hindrance into boulevard parking. And so I would, I guess I would amend the deferral to, I was going to say August, whatever the date is, in August, because I guess I'll turn to staff and say, when is the operations, no removal review coming?
Ms. McCollbrick?
So through you, Mayor. The overall winter review will be coming forward to Audit Committee on June 11th, and the winter sidewalk maintenance report will be coming forward on June 18th.
So I would say, because it's not needed right now, but that we move it to the August committee meeting, which gives time for the engagement, but also an opportunity to look at what we're doing with snow removal and operations. That's my two cents, having gone through it, but again, it's just not going to affect my ward, so.
Okay, Counselor Etherington?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I support the motion and support a deferral. Now you've got me thinking about how far the deferrals should go. I do want to hear from residents before voting on this, so I'll wait to see what happens in the discussion about the actual date of the deferral.
Okay, Counselor Schneider?
Thank you, Mayor Vavenevic. I think the motion as it's originally written, gives us the chance to try it out. It's a pilot, if it works, it works. If it doesn't work, we can make changes after the pilot period ends. So I'm willing to support the original motion.
Counselor Singh?
Yeah, this is my third time speaking on this, I think it's because I am...
I'm being very generous.
Well, you are, but I'm talking on your deferral, so that's why. But I'm speaking again because I am so conflicted. I see both sides of this, but I think that's speaking to what Counselor Galloway-Seelak has said, that we did hear from a wide array of people on both sides, those that were in favor and those that were opposed. I heard a lot more from opposed early on, and over time I've heard those that are in favor. And that is why I agree with you, Mayor Vavenevic, so thank you for allowing me for that time to say that, that I do agree with you, that we do need a public engagement time, and I think it needs to be ample, and going into next term of council allows, I guess, those that are on this horseshoe to have an engaged debate, as well as hearing from the community. And as I said earlier, through the election process, I'm sure those running for office will hear a good earful of, you know, what the merits of this proposal could be. I think the deferral into next term of council would be well merited.
Okay, well, that's not the deferral that's on the table at the moment. Counselor Gazola?
Yeah.
Counselor Gazola has made a motion?
Yeah, and I'm prepared, and it makes sense, it makes sense to deal with it at the August meeting, because it makes sense to listen to what we're going to do about the whole snow issue that's been on the board for two or three years. So like, it's not a decision we have to make tonight, so the August meeting fits in fine. And I think it is really important to have public engagement. We talk about public engagement all the time. By this year, just coming here tonight, there really hasn't been an opportunity for public engagement. So now the public knows, and there are a lot of people in the public that are concerned about the whole snow issue and everything else, so it ties in perfectly. So I'm prepared to change that to that August date, whatever that date is.
Okay, so you were the original mover of the date. Counselor Singh was the second. Are you still supportive of that date?
No.
The original date was the 18th or the 11th?
I said June the 11th.
June the 11th, and now we're going with the August date?
Or the 5th. Okay, thank you, so I'll go with the deferral now.
So the deferral to the August meeting, Mr.?
27.
Sorry?
27.
That would be August the 27th. A recorded vote has been requested on the deferral? Those in favor? Those opposed? Motion carries, so we'll be dealing with that in August. Dealt with that, one, two, three. So I did deal with my motion next. Counselor Etherington has indicated that he's going to have an amendment to my motion. He is acting mayor, so I'll go back a month and ask Counselor Singh to take the chair, while I go over to my normal seat.
Okay, so in the business, we'll bring to Mayor Vavenevic, if you want to. You're already keyed in? Oh, can you key there? I don't know, do we have to switch over, or?
Oh, okay.
Set from mine, yeah. Go ahead, if you want to bring your motion forward.
Thank, yes, thank you very much, Chair Singh, and I'll bring the motion forward. I'll focus primarily on the operative phrases. So be it resolved as a matter of priority in the city's comprehensive development review, which is scheduled to begin later this year. Staff be directed to complete a full review of the city's communications and community engagement procedures for development applications. And further, that staff be directed to report back to City Council with recommendations to improve the development process, including resident awareness, understanding, and engagement with those applications. And Counselor Iannidis said he was going to second that. And if I can just briefly speak to it, Mr. Chair. This, as you'll recall, came out of feedback we were receiving at a region, sorry, rather, at a recent development, Community and Development Services meeting, and as we were dealing with a zone change application. And I think it does speak to things that all of us have heard at various points in time around frustration, around some of the language used in things like planning advertisements and so on, helping ensure that residents are aware of the process, understanding the things that in fact are changeable, and the things that residents can have input in in planning processes, as well as understanding better, ultimately, the directions that council may take in terms of considering some of these applications. The terms of reference for the development review are something that will be coming forward in the future from staff, but in the meantime, I think this sends a strong message to the community, that this is something that we want to be looked at, based on the input that we've been receiving.
Thank you, Mayor Vavenevic. I have Counselor Etherington?
Yeah, my amendment is right here, Madam Clerk. And I have, can I comment on the amendment? Chair Singh? Or do you want me to wait for comments on the motion?
What's up there? Do you have a second, second?
Counsel Fernandez?
It's been moved by Counselor Fernandez. If you want to speak to your motion, go ahead, or your amendment?
Yeah, I was going to say that this goes well beyond a question of language. I would respectfully suggest that we already have a very thorough system in place to encourage resident participation in these, in developments through parks, rehens, and even, to an extent, Crosby, that has succeeded at engaging residents in that development process, hundreds of them, maybe thousands. Engagement is not the problem. The issue is that we get residents to invest their time and energy in the process, as we saw in bright up, only do ignore most of what those residents say, as seen in the recent bright up development. Oh, we tell them that parts, rehens, and maybe Crosby won't become legal documents for at least a year. So resident comments cannot really be considered. We ignore them. And now we have a review suggestion, which will take at least another year. So I would ask, how do we expect to maintain the respect of residents with more promises, that their views might be considered important? We don't need to tweak and tinker and review this whole system to improve citizen involvement in the development process. We just have to listen to people and take note of whatever they comment. This resolution will delay that resident engagement in the development process, as I said, for perhaps a year. And combined with the legal delay of parks, rehens, and Crosby, I would suggest that by the time we get around to having these things in place, most of our downtown and the LRT route will be developed almost completely. So I'll support the motion with the amendment, because I'm not interested in creating yet another illusion that residents, and I'm quoting the motion, that residents' awareness, understanding, and engagement in the development process are vital. So that's why I'm directing the amendment to the mayor's motion. And if the argument comes up, I'll say it now to save time, if the argument comes up, well, we do pay attention to residents. I would suggest that what became very obvious in the bright up debate, and what is now an ongoing problem in a number of communities, we're not paying adequate attention to residents who invested their time in very good systems that are in place. Thank you.
Counselor Jeski?
Very interesting comments by Counselor Etherington, and much food for thought on that. I do agree with the involvement on parks, rehens, and Crosby. Yet I have a question to the mayor in terms of the development applications. Are we talking the applications standard that come before the committee, before council? Are we talking about applications such as site plans, which are development applications that don't even come before council, that are dealt with staff? There are issues that sometimes unfold that do come before us, which is zone changes and subdivisions, condos, but then some of them are severance applications and minor variances that don't come to us, but go to the committee of adjustment. So I'm just trying to understand which development application, maybe he can elaborate on that.
Certainly, with the chair's indulgence, I'm happy to do that. I'm talking about the development applications primarily that presently come to council through the processes that this council has previously approved. If through that process, staff identify other things, that'll be something that, you know, it'll be up to staff to bring forward. I'm not going to presuppose what the end result of a consultation and a review is going to be. I think it needs to begin first and foremost on the things that council is already engaged in with the community, and those include things like zone changes, OPAs, and so on. The other areas are not things that we're currently engaged in, but they may hear from the public that perhaps that should be looked at, and I would leave that to our professional staff to then give us their best professional advice. I would just, well, actually, leave it to that, and at some point, Mr. Chair, I would like to question whether or not this motion is appropriate, actually.
Do you want to raise that now?
Sure, if you'd like me to raise that now.
Do you want to point out where you think it may not be appropriate, and the clerk can answer?
Well, number one, I think I would argue that this recommendation... Well, number one, I think I would argue that this recommendation is getting at a separate issue from the motion that we're talking about. We're talking about engagement in our planning processes in terms of the motion that I've moved and Counsel Ionitis has seconded. Counselor Etherington is getting into the input of people that has come already through the parks, rehens, and Crosby processes. There is a legal and statutory process that those need to continue to go through. Council has made decisions on some of those already, or pieces of some of those. That process needs to be completed, and I think, you know, in all due respect, my colleague, Counselor Etherington, is aware of that. Yes, in that process, that creates some challenges, but this is really a second motion, and if Counselor Etherington wants it considered, it potentially can be considered, but I think it needs to be notice of motion, it needs to be considered separately from the one on the table.
Yeah, I do agree. I was going to raise some points for myself for lack of clarity in the amendment, but I'll ask the clerk if there's an agreement that this would not be an amendment, but a separate direction altogether, if the clerk wants to answer on that.
Through you, Chair. Ultimately, with Robert's Rules of Order, if it comes to a question of germane and whether or not the motion fits, or the amendment in this case would fit with the motion, it really falls onto the chair and to the body to decide that, whether it is germane in this case.
Okay. Well, thanks for passing the seat on to me, Mayor Vavenevic. Point of clarification by Counsel Dapin, go ahead.
Sir, I think the other thing that was asked by Mayor Vavenevic, which I think we should hear from staff, if we even have the appropriate staff available, Mr. May, perhaps, whether, again, this is, again, being that this is in a process, whether this is actually possible or legal to implement at this time.
Mr. Chapman.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Staff had no notice that this issue was coming tonight, and we do believe you'd benefit from legal advice. We're not in a position to give that legal advice tonight.
Okay. All right. Based on the noted concern, I will consider this motion out of order. Again, as I said, I did lack the clarity myself, and was going to raise a similar concern in not supporting, but I think there is validity that, for the purpose of today, I think we, one, we need some additional information from staff and guidance, and two, I agree with the noted concern by Mayor Vavenevic. I'll come to you back, Counsel Etherington, if you want to add something more, or if, you know, you want to add more clarity to your motion, that would help guide us better.
No, Mr. Chair, I just want to point out that the route this council has been following in this area will be further endangered with residents if this is not considered, because I know what will happen if it is not considered. I know already what the advice is, and I can see, well, I don't want to get into that.
And I'm not sure where you're stating that fact from, but again, as it's been said, you can bring this, whatever motion you would want to bring, to and bring notice of motion, and one, it would give staff time to be able to be prepared to comment on it, and we would have a lively debate over it. But as an amendment, in the time that we have, and not having staff to review and comment on it, I think that's where we are at a disadvantage, really, more than anything. I will come back to you again, but I don't want to debate this back and forth, as I have ordered this motion out of order. Go ahead.
Well, the purpose of a debate is there are two people talking to each other, Mr. Chair. If you want to just continue to talk and cut me off, go right ahead, but I just wanted to let you know that this, in my opinion, fits perfectly with the mayor's motion, and I don't want to do it as a separate motion. It's a perfect amendment to the motion that we're considering.
So I just want to quickly read this out for the benefit of everyone, that until this review is completed and approved by Council, contribution and recommendation already made to the development process through residents involved in parks, rehens, and Crosby, procedures are considered thoroughly by planners, which they already are, so I'm not sure what the essence of that part would be. As part of every development project proposed around light rail transit stations and along the route, again, and the reason I clarified further, it's not clear to the chair to take this motion as it's written.
It was perfectly obvious in Brighton.
If you want to.
That resident opinions were completely excluded from that report, so don't tell me that they are included in planning reports. Most of the resident comments that I've learned about were not even in that.
Okay, point of order, Mr. Chair. I'm not trying to be difficult, and appreciate the fact that you've taken over the chair, but first of all, we're not talking about a particular application right now. That particular application has been deferred to a subsequent meeting, and Council will deal with that at that meeting. This is talking about an engagement process with respect to our development review, and I'd like us to stay focused on that and, you know, not go in the direction where Counselor Etherington's trying to take it, which is different.
Again, as I said, I've already ordered, or already made my decision that the amendment is out of order, so we will proceed on what the motion has been already moved and seconded by Mayor Vavenevic, and I will take comments or questions related to that motion only. So that's where the debate will lie. And again, I state this back to Counselor Etherington, I think for the purpose of today, that's why I made my decision as your motion out of order, that doesn't prohibit you from bringing something forward down the road or next term of Council, next, I don't know why I'm stuck on that, the next meeting of Council. Next would be Counsel Guzola.
I'm totally confused.
So am I, but go on.
Okay, I would, it was interesting amendment that Counselor Etherington has put up, I wanted, I had questions.
Counselor Guzola, I just said, we did go back and forth, and it's too bad that, you know, you maybe didn't follow through with what was going back and forth, but as Chair, I have ordered that motion out of order because it isn't to the essence of what we are discussing today. That's all.
Wait a minute, I hear you. I hear you, okay? I just said that I would, I had questions about that amendment, and I really have questions about what's here before us from the mayor. What exactly are we doing with this? What are you trying to say? What are you trying to attain here from that resolution? What does it mean?
Just keep your mic on.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chair, and I thought it was fairly straightforward, but obviously it isn't. I think it's clear in the experience many of us have had around this horseshoe, is there are frustrations that, from time to time, we hear from residents about the development approval process, understanding around the process, frustration around the kind of language that's used in things like zone change notices, OPA notices, and so on, consideration of, you know, what from citizen input can actually be considered as part of the process, how staff actually make their decisions, and their recommendations to Council, and so on. And that is probably one of the single most significant things that we hear from residents, and certainly that was, you know, that has been made clear in various planning applications over the last while to me, and I think to others around the horseshoe, based on conversations that have taken place. And so I think the purpose of this is to really ensure that this is a priority in the development review process that Mr. Redman is going to undertake as part of the mandate that's been given to him by Council and the CAO.
What I'm trying to drive at, what does it do? What does it do to our work and process? Does it do anything? Does it just, where we're at now, because there are a number of other development projects coming up. What does your amendment do? It's just asking for another study that will come back to Council? Do we know when?
Mayor Vavenevic, I just want to request, I don't want it to be every opportunity to answer back a long comment phase, so try to be concise as possible in answering the question. I just don't want it to be seen and questioned by members of Council that it's a long comment on your motion every time, but go on.
To be very clear, is it does not change anything about current processes, because those current processes have been, there's a process in place that's legally approved and that coincides with the legislation that our staff have to deal with.
Okay, so, Chair, when do you expect this report to come back to Council, and what are you hoping to come out of it?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, both Council and the CAO have instructed, as Council is aware, that our new general manager for this area would conduct a development review. That is, the terms of that review are something that is going to be considered by us in the future, but in the meantime, what it is doing is making the engagement portion, the area that we hear the most about, a priority by staff in terms of moving forward with that piece of work. The timelines, you know, I believe that this has been sort of set as something for staff to work on over the next, I look to the CAO, over the next 12 to 18 months, I believe.
Mr. Chapman.
Through you, Mr. Chair. It's a first-year priority for Mr. Redman. Perhaps he can just comment on what his next steps are, because I do believe it is his plan to scope it out over the next few months and then report back to Council.
Mr. Redman.
Through the chair, that is correct. So the first priority is hiring key staff, someone who is a manager of service coordination and improvement, who will project manage this and will be the project champion for it. And in parallel to that process, I'm fleshing out the documents and the terms of reference. It is going to be a multi-year project, so a lot of the planning work the first half of this year, setting a vision for development the second half of this year, and then the full review in 2019.
Okay. Mr. Guzola, your time has ended. If you want to key back in, you can comment.
I just have one more statement I'd like to make.
If you can key back in, and you can make full comments, and you can have five minutes to make your comments, but again, there are others in line as well, so. Counsel Marsh.
Thank you. I will support this motion. I also noted that although Mayor Vavenevic has not indicated which development applications would be a part of this recommendation intentionally, that I would just note that I have heard many times over that the Committee of Adjustment development applications are also in need of improvements to the transparency, basically, resident awareness, understanding, and engagement. And so I'd like to just make sure that those would be considered as included in this direction to staff.
Is that your comment? Okay. Counsel Fernandez.
So I'm a little bit concerned about the timeline, because I, we've spent so many hundreds of hours with hundreds of citizens already reviewing all these different other studies, and I understand that this is different. This is our development review, which is something that we've been, we've asked our staff to do. I wonder how this is going to fit in with the existing studies, although some of them are quite different, so Parks is quite different than Crosby, but Rehens does have some very good recommendations around the way we are developing in certain areas within the city. So I don't know if it's really a question for the mayor or a question for Mr. Redman. I want to really have a better understanding. I certainly think that the mayor's motion is very important in light of what we've seen around this chamber over the last number of months. So I'm leaving it a little bit open-ended as far as.
For clarification, I think it would serve members of Council. This motion is more related to specific development applications or OP for changes as well, or is it to larger bodies of work that get done as well for, when planning matters are considered?
This is particularly focused around citizen engagement. It's not, it's not talking about how the city should be, you know, what's the appropriate planning in Ward Two on Street X, or, you know, Ward Seven on Street Y. This is about the citizen engagement process that's part of the development applications that we consider, and there's a variety of them that get considered and that staff have a role in, and that citizens have an opportunity to provide input in. And that's where we have heard, you know, different levels of frustration. Some of them might be, quite frankly, that, you know, just like we heard earlier today on the issue of, you know, how tax dollars are spent, and we saw in the Emironic Survey, people saying, you know, we need to, and then they, just give me a second here before you come me off, where people have said that they, you know, we need to do a better job of explaining. What may come through some of this is we need to do a better job of explaining some pieces of this.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for the clarification, because I got where you were going, but I was wondering how it fit in with the studies that have already been done, and so essentially, it's a completely separate issue, and the engagement is very, very important. That was my question. I don't really want to get into a comment, but yet.
Perfect, thank you. Counselor Etherington.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Just based on what I've heard, I don't want, I want to see residents fully involved in development projects that we're seeing in my ward and elsewhere in the downtown. I want them fully engaged in that process, and I'm not seeing that happen at the moment, and I'm not seeing that being improved by anything in the mayor's motion. I see more delay, and the resident wants to get involved, makes a good recommendation. We're going to say to that resident, well, I'm sorry, there's a review underway, and so you have to wait until the results of, Mr. Chair.
I don't think that's the case, Counsel Etherington. That's not the case. It's a. No, it's not. It's a.
But I don't see, I don't care what you think. I'm giving you, this is my opportunity to speak, and if you could sit there and stop shaking your head long enough, I just want to present.
Out of order. That's inappropriate, first of all. I don't appreciate that. I can shake my head in any direction I choose. I tried to cut you off, not cut you off, but correct with what you were saying, because you were leading your comments to question of, you know, is it factual or not of what the intent of that motion is. That's why I tried to do it. I was going to take away time, but I'll let you carry on, and then I will help clarify. Finish your comments, please. But please be careful, being personal, you do it too often. I respect you, Counsel Etherington. I will disregard what you said towards me, but please take away your personal emotions out of your comments. Carry on.
I believe that with major developments happening, we want to be able to control those developments and control the involvement of residents, and I'd like to break that cycle. And I think the mayor's motion further contributes to that situation, and I apologize if I showed you any lack of respect.
No, no, that's okay. It's to, the seat not to be personally. It's to, the seed not to be personally. I will, through my comments later, clarify why I was trying to correct to what you were saying, in my opinion anyways. Counselor Davy.
Thank you. I was, not going to lie, I was thinking about calling the question on this, but I won't. I just wanted to comment very briefly. I'm going to support this motion. The only thing I want to just provide, I'm not going to make any amendments, I just want to provide a verbal heads-up as well, that one of my concerns when I see this is, I think the hope and intention here is that, you know, one day will come, on some of our more controversial proposals, we'll come to some sort of meeting between the residents and the developers, and maybe I'm cynical, I may have been here too long, but I think that's, I frankly don't think that's going to happen a lot of instances. But my concern therein is that if we politicize development and we focus entirely on what we hear from the immediate neighbors and we don't listen to what the broader community says as well, I think that's going to have long-lasting impacts on development as well. So, my only hope through this process, and I'm sure we'll have to blow on it in the future, is that it doesn't only shine a spotlight on what's happening in someone's backyard, those voices only. I'm hoping there's some sort of system where there's a control group of residents in the City of Ketchikan that helps determine whether development is good for the city or not.
Counselor Ainadis.
Yes, thank you, Chair Singh. Yeah, I'm hoping to, I'm supportive of the recommendation as I'm seconding it, and the way I look at it is, is just getting, from what we hear from residents is basically that they feel that they're not engaged with the development process. And the way I look at this, this is not a tool that's going to be used for residents to be able to dictate what a landowner can do, and so, and quite frankly, some of the talk that's going around this horseshoe is rather disturbing, and I think it's, you might as well put a close sign on the city, the way some of those comments have been made.
Counselor Snyder.
Thank you, Chair Singh. In this engagement part, I really hope too that we're able to show and explain the benefits of certain developments. What jobs will be brought to our city? There'll be revenue from taxes that previously weren't there. There are needs, as we heard tonight from delegations, for jobs, and if a development can help fill those needs, it might not be jobs, it might be retail, it might be educational. We need to hear the total benefits, and I think the engagement also helps to educate those who may be in that immediate area. As Counselor Davy touched on, there's things that may be good for the overall city, that may be a little bit of a, you know, something that isn't so pleasant to the immediate neighbors, but we have to get all that on the table, so both sides understand where each other is coming from. And I think this is what Mayor Verbanovic is getting at with his motion.
Counselor Galloway-Seelock.
Just quickly, and maybe I'm looking at this too simplistically, but what I'm reading that we're doing is approving a motion for work that's already going to happen and be done, and that it's just asking that this is a priority within the review. I support that.
Counselor Gazola.
I'm totally confused, because I'm understanding we've got a review that's going to be in process, carried out by our staff, and to me, this is really jumping the queue. Should we not be waiting for the staff to prepare their report, and surely they can't do a report on that, on this issue without dealing with public engagement? That's got to be a big part of the report. So, why are we jumping the queue all of a sudden? That's my, so, it may be well-intended, but I, it, to me, it's inappropriate at this point. There's time for, there's time for the thoughts to deal with that down the road when we receive the report from staff.
Counselor Fernandez.
We're commenting.
Yes, please, thank you.
This is tough, because I agree with the motion. I always agree with having more engagement, and if that is where the mayor is going with this, it's direction that he's asking our city manager of development to put as an important component in his review, then I absolutely support it. My but here is that we have spent hundreds of hours, hundreds of thousands of dollars, and hundreds of citizens have come forward on a wide variety of planning projects and planning activities, and yet we're still hearing, and we saw it today, and it was just a small, little comment on the bottom of that webpage that said, "Don't do something that we don't, we tell you we don't want you to do." That's only one small piece of that entire Environics. But we do Environics surveys and community engagement, and Your Kitchen or Your Say, and we have, but we still are feeling, we're still hearing, and Counselor Etherington is correct, we're still hearing from citizens that they don't feel like we're listening. So, if this motion will get to that, that's great, but I fear that we have policies and processes and legislative responsibility around planning, and we somehow still put the development industry first, and sometimes we have to do that. But quite often, we have to remember that those developers are putting the money in their pocket, and then the residents have to live with those implications. And then, a perfect example is what I'm dealing with in my ward. It's been months and months and months, a year, 18 months, of dust and dirt and complaints and grading problems and flooding issues, and the residents don't feel listened to. They don't feel that they're heard. So, I'm going to definitely support this, but I'm wondering if it is going to actually change what needs to be changed.
Counselor Jatski.
It's interesting hearing the comments from everybody around the horseshoe, both pro and against on this, and decided to speak, hopefully being one of the last ones, when I sort of put myself in the shoes of being here around the horseshoe and listening to this discussion, and thinking about all the projects we've considered, zone changes and subdivisions and, you know, studies, et cetera, hearing councillors, hearing residents speak, et cetera, from a, from the shoes of a councillor. Yet, I also look back in my years of career as a planner, back over the years, where you have to be processing applications, and of course, part of the process is listened to a residence, because you have public open houses, P I C engagements, circulation letters, and you've got to consider all sides of the story, both pro and against. And I have to agree that, you know, when I think about it, there is a lot of disconnect between what's happening in terms of decision-making, in terms of residents being heard. Yes, we hear you, but we're going to do this, because that's what the official plan says, so that's what the zoning bylaw says, and we have to go through it. And even though you may have gone through public meetings and heard everybody, that's where you get all the people being upset. And this is, I guess, where the mayor is coming forward and trying to bring forward a review in terms of engagement. Well, you're going to hear it from, if you go, if this gets approved and goes to the public, then you're going to hear from them saying, yeah, we come and give you our opinion, and you go do something else. Sometimes you do listen to us, and sometimes you don't. So, I am going to support this, because I still think, in the end, it's a step forward in terms of trying to address the issue and try to hear what the residents are going to say. I mean, we all have our opinion, but that's my opinion.
Thank you. That's all the comments. I'll make my own. It had to happen while I was chairing, but I'm surprised, something so straightforward and simple, and as many questions or concerns with this motion that got raised. We already are going to proceed forward with a development review that's going to come back with recommendations. Similar to Counselor Galloway-Seelock, the way I saw that, I saw this motion simply directing staff into taking a greater look at the public engagement process, to give that much, to give that aspect more importance, something I think we all around this horseshoe have continued to talk about. So, that's why it surprises me that so many questions or issues with this motion were raised. And that focuses on development process, and yes, we have to look at it, development process, in the perspective of the developer, but at the same time, in the perspective of a resident-led concern, initiatives, or input from established neighborhoods. I think the development process will look at both aspects of it, but it touches on further, talking about including resident awareness and understanding, and I think that's where it's lacking. One of the issues that we continue to get from a resident that takes part in engagement, similar to what Counselor Davy had said, if they said no, and this council or staff were to take a different direction, they feel that they weren't listened to. That's not the case. All aspects legislatively were required, we have to look at all aspects of an application through the lens of the Planning Act. And sometimes that may differ from a perspective of a resident, and that's what the process of the development review will be. So, I would be supportive of it. I think it's probably a more holistic review and look, and at the same time, giving more focus on the engagement and the, from the resident perspective. I will go back to the mover to see if he has any final comments. I'm sorry, you turned off, go on.
Just two very quick comments. This is really about two simple things in my mind. First of all, a better way to inform and engage residents, and secondly, to make that a priority in the overall development review. That's what we're talking about.
Thank you. Recorder vote has been called.
And that's carried. Okay, thank you for chairing that portion, Counselor Singh. Moving on, questions and answers. Any? Not? We'll move into the bylaws. It's been moved by Counselor Schneider, seconded by Counselor Gazola, that leave be given the mover and seconder to introduce the bylaws listed on the agenda, and the same be taken as read a first time and stand referred to the committee as a whole. But just before I do that, are there any extras, Madam Clerk? No? All in favor? Opposed? That's carried. It's been moved by Counselor Schneider, then we move into committee of the whole. All in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Counselor Schneider.
Okay. That the bylaws considered by this committee be taken as read a second time and be recommended for enactment. Mover, Counselor Galloway-Seelock. Those in favor? And opposed? And that carries. The tenders been taken care of. And item two, the renewal of memorandum of understanding with the Waddleut Region Economic Development Corporation, because it's already been dealt with.
Yep.
Good. So, we move on to item number three, applications for cancellation, refund, reduction of taxes, May 7th hearing.
There's two people in the queue for that one.
Okay, and questions?
Counselor Gazola.
Counselor Gazola.
Yeah, I just have a, I have a question as to whether transit, transit assets, I thought transit assets were taxable, and is that the case? That the transit owns property and what have you? Is that, do we not collect payments in lieu of taxes on that?
Mr. Lotenbach. Sorry. Mr. Lotenbach?
The properties that you're referring to, I think, are related to the L R T, that is on the list of, that were acquired, and they would be exempt under the region as part of, as part of the regional government.
So, the region does not pay a payment in lieu of taxes on transit assets? Are we doing, what are we doing here? Taking them off of the regular tax roll, but are we putting them on the payment in lieu of tax roll?
I would have to verify on that piece. Maybe Dan, you can jump in there.
Mr. Chapman.
So, as Mr. Lotenbach said, we'll go back and confirm it, but my understanding is that the L R T assets will become taxable. I think this may be a timing issue, that if these deal with expropriations or their land takings, and the assets are not yet put into use, they may not be assessed, but they'll be picked up as supplementaries in time. But we can confirm that understanding.
No, that's all I wanted to make sure that that was the case. That's fine, thank you.
Counselor Fernandez.
Yeah, I'm a little bit concerned, because it seems like every time we have this, it just seems to go up and up and up. Now, this time, it's a million dollars, and I understand, of course, ones that are affected by demolition and fire and such, but how does this impact our budget? This is almost a percentage of our levy.
Through the chair. So, in terms of the city share, related to the write-offs and adjustments, this is right around the amount that we have budgeted right now. So, we have supplementary taxes that would cover off some of these write-offs. They are more than in previous years, but we do see that it depends on the applications that we receive. In this case, you know, it does seem that this year is higher, but it is still, you know, we still believe that we do have the budget to cover off these adjustments.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Davy.
Yes, sir, I just wanted to add to, in the financial implications, just because Counselor Fernandez referenced the $1 million, it does say it's, that includes the regional and schoolwork portions as well, so the impact to us is 268,000 plus B I A levies.
Any further questions? Okay, it's been, oh, Counselor Marsh.
Thank you. Just a question regarding, is there any movement at the regional level on the question of vacant properties receiving a tax exemption? Has there been any movement on the, I thought there was going to be a report.
Mr. Lotenbach again, sorry.
Through the chair, so the vacancy rebate program is what you're referring to, and there has been discussion at the region related to phasing that program out, but there will be, or that will go back to regional council, and we can certainly provide council with an update on that information as well, if that program changes.
Okay. And, yeah, just a heads up to council, when that report does become public would be helpful. Thank you.
No further questions. Been moved by Counselor Galloway-Seelock. Those in favor? And opposed? And that carries. Item number four, the encroachment request for showing tiebacks below Halls Lane and King Street West for perimeter developments. It's three Friday West. Moved by Counselor Fernandez. Any questions? Those in favor? And opposed?
Moved at the committee rising report.
Okay. That the proceedings...
You've got to do an all in favor.
Sir?
All in favor.
All in favor? And opposed? Okay. Now the fun line? Okay. That the proceedings and recorded pecuniary interests and conflicts taken in the meeting of the committee of the whole held this date as attached here to and forming part of these minutes are hereby adopted and confirmed.
And seconded by?
Counselor Marsh. All those in favor?
No, not like, all in favor? Back to me now.
Oh, sorry, back to me.
All in favor?
Sorry.
Opposed? That's carried. It's been moved by Counselor Schneider, seconded by Counselor Gazola, that the bylaws listed on the agenda for a third reading be taken as read a third time, be finally passed and numbered seriously by the clerk. All in favor? Opposed? That's carried. And it's been moved by Counselor Davy that we now adjourn. All in favor? Opposed? That's carried.